I mean, that's cool. Alright, so we had some interesting conversation about calling. Anybody feel, anybody do any research about calling in between the weeks? No? Alright, well, that's good because I did a lot of research and homework and I figured I'd just tell you what it was.
Oh, good.
Today. Okay. So, based on last week, there was a lot of, we needed a lot of clarity. We talked about calling. We started to talk about spiritual gifts and abilities, but we didn't really dive too deep into that. We didn't get a chance to because we kind of kept going back to calling, which is good. Again, there's a lot of, a lot of different versions of calling. Everybody's got different callings. We're gonna go through that today and just kind of walk through. There will be some points of discussion, but it's gonna be very different than what we usually do. So, I'm gonna kind of, we're gonna kind of roll through the slide. When we get to a discussion point, we'll discuss it a little bit, come up with different things. But we want to keep rolling because there's quite a bit to get through today, including some stuff that we're gonna do today. Alright, so, secular definition of a calling. Did everybody see that? Sort of? Alright, so we went through this kind of last week. We looked at the noun of the secular definition. We went through the synonyms, talked about those. So, just putting this up here again as a reminder, that's what the definition is in the dictionary. It's impulse toward a particular course of action or a location or profession. That comes into play later. So, that's what, that's what it is as far as that goes. Now, one of the other things last week that came up is we had people say, "Well, I'm not called." Or, "Only certain people get called." Eh, wrong, not true. Talked about that last week as well. So, but this goes into, you know, we are all called and how are we all called? We're called by God. And every single one of us is. There's a difference between his call, the main call, which, what was the main call that we came up with last week? What do we, what was the one sentence thing that we came up with? It was like a few words?
We were called to...
Look at the bottom for you. Look at the bottom. Somewhere right here.
Further His kingdom, yeah.
Not so much here, but like here.
That's what I was saying.
Alright, so, yeah, so we're all called to further His kingdom. He called us to enter into His kingdom and then in turn we have, we're to further it. So, that's the ultimate call everybody has. There is nobody that's excused from that calling. Clear on that? Alright. Now, one of the things, I, I have some righteous anger today, to be honest with you. One of the things that we need to start with here is our identity. A lot of us don't know what that is. Or, we, we are influenced by a lot of outside things. Social media, what the world says that we are. So, in order to really get a better understanding of your gifts and what you have to offer, you have to know who you are, who God is, and who you are in Christ, right? So, I threw this together based on, I have a book that talks about, you know, learning your identity. And it's like a hundred-page book, but I kind of tried to summarize it real quick. But it's important for us to start with this, with who we are, right? Does anybody see anything up here that they disagree with or question? There's a lot of other stuff too, but I just, I slimmed it down to this, to be honest, because God does talk about us a lot in the Bible. And He does tell us all those things. You see, there's quite a few verses, your homework for next, no, not kidding. But that's really what that is. And that might end up being a shirt of some sort, in some way. That's actually part of the plan. So, we need to know that we are all those things in Him first. Who before what? Okay? So, if we're all good there, let's continue on and talk about spiritual gifts. So, there are four places that spiritual gifts exist biblically that they talk about specifically. They're at the top there. And this just kind of rolls through a couple of things. Exercising your gifts develops spiritual maturity. So, if you're not working on your gifts, you're not maturing in Christ. It's a pretty big deal. Everyone is given at least one gift. Everyone. The Holy Spirit determines which gifts. Each gift is equally valued. Now, these slides I'll put online, so you can review those later. You can write them down if you want as well, but this will all be available should somebody else want to look at any point. So, this, like I said, this one's gonna be a little different. Pretty much everything we do is going to be available because this is more of a bootcamp for identity and spiritual gifts and stuff like that. And what I really tried to do was take a lot of different, either complicated or volumes of information and try to just strip it down and what's important, right? So, we can get through it because there are classes, there's all kinds of stuff. I just wanted to make it simple and hit the big stuff. So, our gifts serve the benefits of the body. This is why we all have them. Because God gave them to us to what? Further His kingdom. That's why everybody has them. Why would He not give you a gift? And then it doesn't serve them. So, it's important to know that. We are commanded to use our gifts. We'll get into that in a little bit. So, let's list out the spiritual gifts. So, here's what I'm gonna ask you to do. Off the top of your head, if you know some of them, please share. Otherwise, Romans 12. What, 1 Corinthians 12:8 through 10. Like, we have to open up to those different areas and we want to identify what the spiritual gifts are. I want us to list them. Yes.
I had a bunch of them that I found, but I, right?
Yeah, but it gave me one.
Isn't it like the gifts of power, which is like faith, healing, miracles, is that one?
Healing is one.
Healing. Wisdom?
But wisdom is one?
Knowledge?
Yes.
I'm done.
Okay, but those are, those three are there. We just got started. You're good.
Gift of tongues?
Toms is one. Yeah, the gift of tongues is one. Anyone else? You're doing well, you know, I'm just gonna see if anybody else.
Prophecy.
Prophecy is another. Yeah.
Hospitality.
Teaching.
There's a little array with hospitality. We'll get to that. Teaching.
Serving.
Serving.
Yeah.
So, how many of us listened so far? Probably, somebody probably should've been writing this down. Alice said, she said that. That's, there are two different ones. There you go. Yep. What else we got?
The gift of financial generosity.
Yeah, generosity. Yep, that's there.
Like administration.
Yeah. Leadership, administration, those kind of go together. Yep.
Evangelizing or evangelist.
Yeah, it's interesting that that's, there are two that usually are the first two thought of. But here we're saying, which is actually, I think that's cool. Because a lot of times we think spiritual gifts are just for pastors. That's not true. So, we're actually, you've mentioned evangelism, which is more like a missionary type of thing, right? And then what's, what's another one?
Pastor.
The pastor, pastor, teacher, but shepherding as well, shepherding.
Show mercy.
Mercy is another one?
Definitely.
Yeah, Romans 12:7, mercy.
Alright, so we feel pretty comfortable with the list? We do have a cheat sheet. I don't think we missed anything.
How about edification, building?
Oh, exhortation. Exhortation, edification. Well, no, that's, I think we missed that one. So, exhortation, encouragement and exhortation are the same thing. Edification.
Is building up the body.
It's all that, yeah. Just realized Larry's not here. I know, it was interesting. Alright, so I think that's all of them.
That's the majority.
That's enough for right now, so we.
Living in harmony with one another.
Yeah, well, that's right.
That's edification, yeah.
Alright, so, those are the spiritual gifts. So, here's... So... So, are those the only spiritual gifts?
No. There's gotta be any extra.
Are there any more defined spiritual gifts in Scripture?
Yeah. Ephesians. Or, let me get back there.
So, there's a hierarchy.
Unity in faith.
Faith. Faith is, we missed faith.
Knowledge of the Son of God.
Yeah, she mentioned knowledge. Faith, we missed. I can't believe we missed faith.
Okay. How about maturity?
Well, that's just like what we all have.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that was the thing with the hospitality. It was interesting because I read a couple of different versions, translations. And one, NIV, it lists hospitality as a spiritual gift in Romans 12, but ESV does not. What it says is we're all supposed to be hospitable. It was like after that. So, that's where I struggle with hospitality as a gift. Because we're all supposed to be hospitable.
Would it be wrapped in with encouragement then? Because hospitality is.
Serving, like encouragement, right? So, other things, so, and that's really what I kind of want to get to. Remember when we talked about sin, we add all sin funnel into the Ten Commandments? It's the same kind of thing with spiritual gifts. Everything kind of funnels through those, the spiritual gifts at that high level. And that is, to have a spiritual gift, you have to be a Christian.
Right.
Sorry, that's on a different slide. You have to be a Christian. You have to believe in spiritual gifts. What's that?
When will we not use our spiritual gifts?
Never. We use them all the time.
It's our choice not to use them.
When you get to heaven, you don't need them anymore.
Well, it's our choice not to use them. Yeah. So, spiritual gifts. Moving on. Any questions about, sorry, any questions about spiritual gifts? Okay. And you'll see how this all kind of pulls us together later. So, our calling is calling with an S potentially, because it could be one, it could be a purpose. So, the difference between this is, you know, there's God's calling and then there's a calling. When we had the discussion last week, we talked about, I think it was you, Daniel, that said, "Well, I was specifically asked to do this or said to do this." Now, that's not the ultimate call, but that is a calling. So, that's the difference, a calling or a purpose. Now, you can have callings plural, multiple different things. You're directed in different ways, okay? So, it's not semantics. It's important to know the difference. And it was kind of a struggle, to be honest. What's that? There's Larry. So, it was honestly a bit of a struggle for me. I had to go through this, this slide deck four or five times to like, no, that's confusing. I need to go back and rename that. What? That is not how, because there's a lot of, and you'll see a little bit later, there's a lot of stuff that kind of intertwines. But it's important to differentiate. So, our calling, our callings or our purpose is different. It serves God. It funnels through the ultimate calling and it uses our spiritual gifts. Okay? So, you go through and read, you know, so it's a specific caller invitation, you know, and, oh, by the way, many different ways to receive a calling. Can, can you tell me why in the Old Testament, God would call down to somebody verbally, but in the New Testament it didn't happen as much forever? Exactly. That's it. There's your answer. Right, so, when we were talking last week, hey, we get called audibly. Like, that's why I don't have a calling, because I didn't get called audibly. We have the Holy Spirit. That's why we don't get called on. But back in the Old Testament, they didn't have that. That's the difference. So, the Holy Spirit moves us from within. And so, that was a pretty important thing. That was one of the things as I was doing my preparation, that came to light. And I was like, oh, I have to ask that because that's the difference. So, you get nudged or you get, there's a bunch of different ways that happens. And it could be small or large, very, greatly based on it. So, now that we know this, I want, can we come up with some examples of a, of a calling or purpose?
Rome to Damascus, this one, this event. That was a huge.
Paul was, yeah, Paul had some pretty clear callings. I mean us.
Oh, you mean us?
Yeah, just general, like, like callings, not, you know, in general. What would you consider a calling or a purpose?
Going into other world and preach the gospel.
Okay, but we're all to preach the gospel because we're all the priesthood, right?
A personal calling?
Wouldn't sheers be used?
What is, what is a calling or a purpose? Because how does this differ from God's calling, is my question?
Well, it doesn't differ.
Okay, so, you're going to reach people the same way that I do?
No.
Okay, then it differs.
But it's all.
Our calling meaning, okay, let me, let me rephrase. Your individual calling.
Oh, okay, alright.
Our meaning, like, each of our calling. Sorry, that's, that's where I need to clarify.
Okay.
I guess. So, there's God's calling and then there's our call. Our call is like each of us individually are called different. We have, we are called different separately.
Right.
Because if we weren't called in a different way, why did we get different gifts? It doesn't go together. Makes no sense, right? Why do we have different gifts? So, we have different gifts and then we need to know how, how or where to use them. That's the calling. That's our calling.
Well, we got different gifts and it's different people.
A lot of different reasons we have different gifts, but yeah, you're right.
That's one.
Ultimately, yeah.
That's one of the reasons.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, you said today, if we, you know, if you said, "God, I don't have any gifts." Come on, I don't have any gifts. Then, boy, that's a red flag buckle, you know?
Well, people also say they're not called, or they have no calling.
Yeah, but you said today, on your, on your saying, you said that is a red flag.
Oh, yeah, I did. Oh, you're talking about the video. Yeah, it is.
You said, if you say, you know, like, "I don't have a gift," well, then that's, that's, that's bad.
Why, and why would I say that that's bad if you're?
I think because we all do. We might deny those gifts, maybe.
We never look for it. We never seek.
Look, you know.
There's effort that's gotta be put into it.
That's right.
And if you haven't put effort into trying to find it.
It says up there, "The thing is, you must be listening to hear the call and then willing to answer when you do." And when the Holy Spirit touches each person, sometimes you answer, sometimes you don't. You ignore it.
So, I go back to, do we have examples of a calling or a purpose for an individual? Like, it doesn't have to be you, just a general one, because we'll get to you, to your specific one later. But like, what would you consider, like a missionary? Okay, like, that's the kind of stuff I'm looking for. Like, a missionary is called to go to Europe or to somewhere. What other, give me examples of callings.
I don't really call, but I feel led to speak to people that are new.
Okay.
Everybody really, but, you know, especially the new people. I ended.
I'm getting distracted.
I don't think sometimes we use our gifts without even knowing that you're using them. Sometimes, like, people say, "I don't even know what they are." And like we said the other last week, and you could go, "Well, I can tell you what it is." Because people are, you're used, people are using their gifts and without them identifying that you're using it, it's there and you're using it without even knowing that you're using that gift.
Yeah.
Like, um...
But I'm still on purpose.
Okay. Okay, alright.
No, no, I get what you're saying and we'll get into that. But if we have, we're never gonna get through this. So, I just want to get to a point and then it all makes sense. I agree with you. There's, it's called counter power affirmation, which we have later. But I mean, we should be able to find, it's pretty important, I think, to be able to come up with.
Well, sure.
A calling.
God's purpose in Billy Graham was very important. It was large. And he met with people all over the world. And people accepted Christ from every nation. And he did a wonderful job. His wife thought differently. Well, somebody asked her, "Have you ever thought about divorcing Billy Graham?" Because he's gone so much. And she said, "No, but I've considered murder." Because she was like.
Killing.
She was like with the five kids and had to take care of everything.
How about teaching a Sunday school class?
Well, there was a time that I.
What about playing music?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean.
Feeling a call to do more.
Oh, really?
And I didn't know what the call was supposed to be. We got done with Sunday school a little early and I sat there and I said a prayer. I said, "Lord, let me know what you want me to do."
Right.
And I walked out of the church and someone walked right up to me and says, "We need you on the beach for..."
Oh, really?
That would be a calling.
Sure would.
So, I joined up, but when I was going through my divorce, they asked me to step down.
Oh.
Just.
Technically, I was like, yeah.
Don't you think you have a calling?
What's that?
Don't, don't you think that you have a personal calling to teach this class?
Yes, he does.
You had a, I don't want to, I don't want to subvert your impulse or whatever you want. They have specific, you want.
Oh, yeah, this wasn't my plan.
Right. That, to me, is a calling.
Correct. And I'm just asking for examples. That's all I'm asking for, is examples of different, so we can have an understanding of what that is.
That is, that was a calling.
Yep.
Okay, then I would say that mine was probably many, many, many years ago that I was sitting at a funeral for a dear friend of mine in First Baptist Painesville. And they had a Christmas tree in the front of the thing. And I sat there and I kept looking at it and it was like, you know, and immediately was, "I want to take that to my church. We need this." And so, that to me, and I was, you know, I took it and ran it. You know, because it was important and I wanted, it was just, I don't know. So, to me, to me, that was maybe a calling many, many years ago to do that. And it has continued on, yeah. So, I would say that.
So, callings can be big and small.
Oh, yeah.
Now, what about purpose? Purpose is big.
Yes.
So... What's an example of a purpose?
It's doing whatever it takes to build the kingdom.
Right.
I mean, that is our purpose. Building the kingdom of God. So, now, another example would be, I would often pray, "What do you want me to do?" And that Sunday, someone came up and says, "We need you on the search committee." So, I said, "Okay." Then I got to the search committee meeting and they said, "Everybody raise their hand if they want to build the kingdom."
Oh, no.
Everybody raised their hand, I believe, so I was.
I've experienced that.
That's how I got to be chairman of the search committee.
Purpose. We'll, we'll talk more about that. Okay, so, abilities, talents and gifts, because guess what? Individually, we're gonna go through exercises for each of these things. So, it's very important for you to understand what it actually is on a macro level, so that you can do it for yourself. So, abilities, talents and gifts, there's the definitions. And they're pretty much interchangeable in certain ways. Now, a gift obviously can be a present or it can be whatever. But in this way, same thing. And you can have gifts that are not spiritual gifts. Playing an instrument would be, you're gifted. Is it a spiritual gift? No. Does it funnel into a spiritual gift? Yes. But you see, there's a hierarchy to this. And it's kind of important to understand that, because it helps you identify each of them and use them together to further His kingdom. It's very important to know these differences. And that there are different levels, because it helps you know when to say yes and when to say no. But we'll get to that. What are different examples of abilities, talents, gifts?
I like to think that missions ladies, they're really good with the cricket.
Yeah.
I mean, and scrapbooking and all that stuff.
Scrapbooking, yeah.
No, I don't know how to do any of that, but people, well, your mom, yeah. She can, yeah. So, those things are amazing.
So, creative.
And the missions ladies use them all the time.
Yeah, and they educate the congregation.
Right.
What about Larry's ability to do finance personally? Is that a spiritual gift?
Fantastic gift.
A gift. It's an ability, right?
Yeah. And he has a gift to teach young adults. Not everybody has that gift, but he does.
And is that a gift or a spiritual gift?
What?
Is that a gift or a spiritual gift?
It's a spiritual gift.
So.
But it can be both.
Yes.
Oh, it can be both.
Well, and you know what, you know who I'm gonna look to next to prove that? Damn. Is teaching your spiritual gift? Last week, you said it was not. However, you are gifted in teaching. So, you're a prime example, right? And that's why it's important to know, yeah. So, it might seem like semantics it's not. Because if you, you start chasing the wrong thing, you go down the wrong, you're like, well, I'm, I'm spiritually gifted to teach. And that's what, you know, you can be led astray if you don't understand the differences. So, it's not semantics. This is very important to know. So, just stick with me and it'll make more sense. I've made that mistake. I've gone down, "Oh, I'm doing..." No. There is a difference and you need to know the difference, because you need to be able to ascertain or discern what you should do and if it's really extending His kingdom or harming that or, or not doing any of that. And it's just important. So, what other, what other abilities, talents, gifts do we have, just as an example? How about working with your hands? What else we got? Give us some other examples. How about being athletic? Is that, is that a gift from God? Is that an ability, talent?
It's a gift, but it's kind of spiritual.
All, right, but it's, all, all those are in the same, right? So, those are all in the same bucket here.
Yeah.
On purpose, right?
Yeah.
It helps you do something.
You can use it as a spiritual gift.
It's not a spiritual gift.
You can use your talent.
To, to build your spiritual gift, that's the important thing. It follows up, but it's not the same.
You can use it like Tim Tebow.
Oh.
How he furthered the kingdom of God by using his natural gift.
But now you see how it's a hierarchy, right?
You can use it.
Yes. But if you focus on, and you get in trouble, if you now call that a spiritual gift. Because some people will call that a spiritual gift, but it's not. But that's why it's important to know.
You can use it in your, with your spiritual gifts. You can use.
This all works together.
Your natural talents with your spiritual gifts.
It all works together, but you have to know what the pieces are and how to put them together. And if you do not, you can go down the wrong path.
Right.
That's the point.
Very so.
Yep. Okay, we get, I did get it. So, why should we pursue our calling? Hey, Larry, did, the parable of the talents, somebody might've mentioned that.
We talked about that there.
We did talk about that.
The pastor had a sermon about that. Have you noticed? The very, next Sunday, we talked about it.
Well, I, I wasn't there for, I had to leave.
Oh, sorry.
So, did he really?
This one.
No, she is a prostitute, because she was a symbol, an example of the Israelite people and how they rebelled against God. But God still had His arms open to forgive them if they would come back to Him and quit worshiping idols and quit rebelling. And He used that prostitute as the example. And she left Hosea. And God said, "Go get her, bring her back" to show that He would accept His Israelite people and forgive them for all their sinfulness and their rebellion. But do you think they did? No. They did not.
I just thought Hosea was stupid for marrying a prostitute.
That's exactly right.
So, pursuing calling, so what are the reasons, anything else come to mind for pursuing, for why we should pursue our calling? Doesn't have to be a scriptural example at this point, just any other reason.
It will fulfill you.
Thank you, Bill. You know, when you have that hole that you don't know how to fill and you try to fill it with a bunch of other stuff? This is really part of that remedy. We get busy and we have all this stuff going on and we think that's good. I speak from experience. We get busy and we have all this stuff going on, and we think that's good, I speak from experience. Uh, then we think that we're doing the work of God, and it's really just distracting us from doing the work of God, uh, that he's called us to. That is, um, that's sort of a bit scary. It's a bit scary, but I also, I did, yeah. So... Parable of the talents, what happens to the person that didn't invest?
They didn't invest.
Did not?
Oh, he was committed.
So, so, but what does that mean? Does that mean if we don't use our, what happens to us if we don't use our gifts?
They're taken away from us. We don't have them anymore. You've gotta use it or you lose it.
It's pretty serious, and we just talked about how we can be fulfilled by using our gifts, and we also become closer to God by using the gifts that God has given.
Best, yes.
I don't want that taken away.
So when Don was preaching this Sunday, he didn't really address that, that part, because, you know, the parable says the person that won talent buried it, and the pastor came back and said, you would get served, you know, you knew I was a hard man.
Right.
Uh, you know, something where, you know, don't, don't reap or whatever, and you went and buried it, and he says, it'll be gone with you.
That's right.
Outside with this weeping and gnashing of teeth, which seems to say, you don't use your talents, you're going to hell, not just losing your talents, or maybe losing your soul, it seemed kind of extreme on Jesus's part.
Not really, it seems harsh, but it isn't.
If you're not using your talents, you're not building the kingdom of God. So you're not answering your calling.
Yeah, it's a bigger...
You're rejecting the work that the Lord has given you to do. So, what do you deserve?
But that's not part of John 3:16, for all those who believe and confess, you know, Jesus is Lord.
Yeah.
They'll have eternal life.
Okay.
So now you're adding a component of works to it. So, and Don didn't even address, see, I was waiting for him to say something about that. I think the closest he got was basically saying that, uh, being cast out to, to hell if you don't use your talents means that you were never saved to begin with.
Exactly.
I think he was trying to say that.
That's the point.
But that's a hard, for me to connect those dots.
Okay, I was disturbing, because I was in, I was in the back.
Oh, that's true, you were.
I was gonna say just that, that if you weren't, you, then you, if you're not using your talents in doing the work of God, then you really have no relationship with them.
What's the sin to death? We, we studied this. What's the sin unto death?
The only unforgivable sin?
Yeah, what's that?
Being not as a holy spirit.
Turning the other way. So if we're not even trying to find our spiritual gift, if we're not trying to apply and live the way Christ wants us to live, isn't that turning the other way?
He's truly rejecting Christ.
That's the point, yeah, that's...
And that is blessing.
That's what it is.
The spirit is of Christ.
And if the spirit's in you, and the spirit's nudging you to do something, and you're like, nah. It's the same thing.
Right.
Don't complicate it.
No.
I mean, it's very... Jarring, but it should be. If you're not seeking and trying to figure out how to follow Christ's example, you're not a believer.
It's one of the people that he says, go away, I never...
Exactly, you're lukewarm.
That's right.
There are multiple places, and that's, that honestly is what scared the crap out of me when I really started studying everything, and got me to move. Because it's like, oh crap, all this hogwash, or, I shouldn't say that way, but all this, all this stuff that talks about, you know, uh, it's fine, do whatever you want, you're forgiven, that's not what the scripture says. That's part of what the scripture says, but it goes along with other things, and faith without works is death. And people will be like, well, you don't get to heaven because of works. True, but if you don't do works, you're not saved to begin with.
That's right.
If you're truly saved, you're going to work it. Okay. How's that? You don't believe that? What do you think?
No, I'm just still trying to connect the dots. Yeah, there's, there's a fine line between works for salvation and...
Yeah.
And just not using, because you could be, not use your calling, but you could still be a very strong Christian, you could be doing things that may be outside your calling. Like, I'm not a Sunday school teacher, but, you know, I love the Lord, I can teach in Sunday school, I'm not using my calling. I'm not, I don't think I'm going to hell either, because I'm trying to return a portion unto the Lord. You know, I'm not just trying to bury, you know, my life and not use it, but to, to jump to, well, you're not using your specific calling, you're gonna go to, you're going to hell, that seems...
That's what, that's what that said.
That seems erroneous.
That? What does it say, though? I mean, you're the one that brought it up.
You know, that, that doesn't, doesn't really say that, when they say that he took his talent, buried it, basically what Jesus was saying, you're not...
You're not doing any giving, right, that's a different, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm not saying specifically, we're not saying specifically if you don't do one thing, that's not, if you don't pursue him, and that's all part of, that's all part of it, you're...
Nah, that helps a lot.
Yeah, sorry.
If I was born to be an accountant, and I refuse to do the church treasury stuff, but I try to seek and do stuff other ways to invest in it, then that should, that should be, that, that's a different story.
Yes, 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 yes. When you bury one...
You have to show extra, you can zip like bell.
Yeah.
Pretty good, how, how are your girls doing?
Yes, thank you, Larry, I didn't think that was, okay. Um, burying, yeah, we good with that?
Yeah. Can I mention one thing about doing it? So, you talked about how you feel, if you, do you feel better, do you feel fulfilled? If you just start very small, like, I remember when I decided I wanted to run, and I started by walking around the block, and then I walked faster on the block, and then I trotted around the block, and then I did my dog with me, and before you know it, we were going six miles every day. And, um, so my point is, is that if you, if you start small, even if it's just a small beginning, you build on the strength of the base that you started with, and before you know it, you're doing more and more, you become more confident, you're, um, able to share more, and you just have so much more strength than you can in the collar. You just have to do it, just do it.
Yes, but first we have to identify, have our identity, which, you know, some people, so our identity is important, and this is all part of that, we're not even talking about how do we apply this yet, we're not even close to that. We still have to identify what this stuff is in general, then in us, applying the search, probably next week. Actually, it's going to be next week. But that's, that's good. Um, so, steps to find your calling, we're still, we're talking about how do we seek it, right? That's step one. Now, this is a bunch of stuff, you know, we don't have to do all that stuff. Um, but I wanted to show you, these are from different things, and last week I kind of showed a little bit of this, but these are from different sources, from secular sources, Tiny Buddha, um, you know, I believe renovation faith, and then theology of work, which is pretty cool. But those are how to find a calling from multiple different perspectives. Being Real has her own little version. Five-step approach. So... We have to understand that we are called, right? We have to define that, we have to go through and figure out what our spiritual gifts are, we have to figure out our calling and purpose, our abilities, and then we have to have affirmation of that. Oh gosh, I forgot to update that, don't worry about that, it's fine. Um, we, we've proven, I don't know how to do technology stuff earlier today. That's what it is, you have to be a Christian, um, uh, you have to believe in, uh, spiritual gifts, and you have to be willing to work, and you have to pray. All that stuff matters, there's a bunch of stuff to this. But I've tried to simplify it down for us to get us somewhere quickly. So, now, what you have in front of you is, uh, going to walk you through what we just, what is on the screen here. So, we've talked about how we're called, now we're gonna talk about, we're gonna go into, we've talked about spiritual gifts, but you're only gonna take a test on spiritual gifts, right now. You can turn the light on, yes, because we've done that. So, if you flip it over...
Thank you.
You're gonna flip that over. Yes, thank you. So, you will have this here thing. Now wait, wait, hold on. Um, and then you'll have this here thing. So, I took four or five of these, and came up with this one for a couple reasons, it's, it's much easier to kind of calculate, and there's a youth version of it as well. But, uh, this one, what you can do is you can go through and you can write down all your numbers as you go through here, and then score it. But I gave you a separate score sheet, because it'll be faster if you just have a score sheet next to you, and you put the number in, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten across, as you go through the questions.
Oh, okay.
So you can do that either way. Um, the way that it's intended is you write down all of your numbers here, then you have to go back and put the numbers in here. I'm trying to save you some time.
Yeah.
So, as you roll, I'm gonna go through this, right? So it says, for best results, answer each statement according to who you are. Do not think about it, answer whatever comes to your mind first, and you have to go one through five. One is very inaccurate, and five is accurate, so if it describes you, it's a five. If it's no way, like, you'd run the opposite direction, it's a one. Everybody cool with that? And then, as you go through, uh, you're gonna go down each of these and label it one through five. When we're done, you're gonna go through, and put it, put it, put it on here, and then this will actually be able to tell you, it's like a psychological thing, it'll tell you what your spiritual gifts or your strongest spiritual gifts are. Don't worry about that, just answer the questions as you go through it, and start about now. It's gonna take you about thirty minutes. If you need help, let me know, but you can't cheat. Can't cheat on the test. I don't want you writing down the ones that are the top three, any reason for that.
Okay, so...
Now Larry wrote down every single one, which is fine, but I really want you focusing on yours. So I don't even want you paying attention to the other ones. Your, your strongest one, I should say. But there's no wrong there.
Yeah, I can help it.
No, no, we're gonna do that in a second.
I want your personal opinion, you know me so well, you thought those were the...
Why affirmation? That's part of it, ask another, so we haven't got it, that's not yet.
What was your top one?
What was that one?
Administration. Serving, yep.
That makes sense, that makes a lot of sense.
I am confused by this one.
What was it?
Not being higher.
Which one was it?
Teaching is not higher for...
Well, but see, it can be the same thing, it's not a...
No, no, well, it's not an exact same, but also, depending on when you take it.
Yeah.
It does change, your, your gifts do shift based on what the needs are. Minor, minor difference.
I don't know what the fifty-nine sounds like, see what that is.
All right, we're actually gonna share, share ours, but first question I have, how, raise your hand if you've taken a spiritual gift test before.
Good for you, buddy.
Way back when Mike Cole was doing it, maybe twenty years ago, so...
So five, so less than half, I'm sure Sam has. Because Sam hasn't been, well, Mike, he would've been young when Mike did it. Or not, no, he would've been...
Probably how you're born.
No.
I'm an old man.
Well, no, I remember when Mike did it too, but I'm trying to think.
Probably in the nineties, yeah.
I don't, it was a while ago, it was in a new church, wasn't it? I'm pretty sure, I don't know. So... How you doing?
I'm just on a basis.
Hey. And, so, uh, what I wanna do, though, is kind of keep rolling through a lot of things we wanna do today. Uh, I'd like to roll around and have each of you name your top three, and I wanna see what people think of them. So this is, we're gonna get affirmation, which is part of, part of this, from people in the room. Now, obviously, if you know that person, you'll have something to say. If you don't, that's okay, but we're going to kind of go through that process as well. If you don't feel comfortable, you don't have to, but, um, you know, it's up to you. So Larry, what are your top three?
Uh, administration, serving, and faith.
Okay. Anybody, uh, we could see that from Larry, he was a little surprised by that, actually. What, what were you, you're surprised by one of them, which one, administration?
Yeah, that's one of my higher ones, and it's weird, but like, ten out of fifteen categories, I scored above twenty-two. It's up here, twenty-two to twenty-eight could indicate a spiritual gift. And the season is dangerous.
Yes.
So, I had a lot of those that were close to those three, but not quite there.
I think I had a lot of time, it's because I forgot to use three, so...
Well, and that's, there's that as well.
So that skewed a little bit.
But it's something you can certainly take over again, but yeah, nothing surprising, uh, and we'll talk about that, um, in a second. I think the teaching part, honestly?
I made a math error, that got, it wasn't just a little higher, to twenty-six.
Okay, you made a math error in your account, okay. Uh, who let that go for now? It was like, it looks exactly like a spreadsheet, that's okay. Um, but I think as you, for me, mine changed, uh, quite a bit, and I had other ones kind of scroll up, but I think it's because of teaching. I think it's because, because you get into different aspects, you have to, like, we were talking about this before, Deb mentioned last week, and she's like, well, encour, I think it was you, I thought I should be encouragement, and I'm like, no, that's exhortation's not one of mine. Um, but it's raised up because of the thing, how we're applying it here, so, I think that's why Larry's seeing that as well. I mean, that's certainly the case for me. Diana, how are you?
Administration, mercy, and faith. And administration was my top one, and that did surprise me a lot.
Didn't surprise her.
Not at all.
Or her.
I'm very organized, yes, but, yeah.
But that's, but that's the point, right?
She's very detail-oriented, there's no doubt about it.
And that's why we want others' input to be able to help us to affirm those things, and almost always, you'll, it'll be affirmed if it's what you should be doing. All right.
Well, my highest one was teaching. Then I have three with the exact same.
Yeah, good.
So, uh, discernment, faith, and mercy, were the other three all exact same.
Those were your three highest ones?
The highest one was teaching, and then discernment, faith, and mercy.
Oh, okay.
Because those were all the same money.
Very good.
See, my top one was faith, and then I had three that were the same, mercy, pastor, shepherd, and wisdom.
So pastor, shepherd shouldn't scare you, shepherding means you're nurturing and caring for the flock, and it doesn't matter what, it could be, uh, that presents in many different ways, like, I would think that, it'll be interesting, I won't, don't tell her this, but I would think that shepherding would, would rank up on roses because of how...
Yeah.
You know, just, just, so don't freak out with that, because shepherding just means you care about others, and you're nurturing their growth and, and that kind of thing. It's not, the pastor part of it, pastors, some of them don't even have that as a spiritual gift.
That's true.
I know that to be fact, just, just say it. Um, any, anybody have any affirmation or...
I don't know, she's lived through a lot of crap, so she's...
There you go, all right.
That's true.
Cool, yeah.
Um, I disagree with mine, but, so, I, I come from a family of teachers, but I never wanted to be a teacher. Um, however, I did learn that teaching and faith, they were both the same, um, followed by evangelism, and then a post-borthist service, which I think must've missed that, because service is definitely a huge one for me, but it wasn't one of my top three.
And this is not a know-it-all, but it does sometimes shed light on how we should step back and rethink a lot of things, is, is all it is, right? It's not, it doesn't mean that that's what it is, but that's why it's a bunch of things put together, I mean, that's why you ask others, and, yeah. And we're only one step into this, so go ahead.
Okay, so, now that you really know me so, you know, I've spent much here, so, um, it's definitely changed from what I did like fifteen years ago.
Okay.
So, the first one was faith, that's because of crap. The second one was pastor, shepherd, and then the third one is exhortation.
Okay, so encouragement, you don't think you're, Deb? I guess I'll be looking at Deb, well, Deb, what, do you think that's...
Yeah.
Okay. See, there's one, it only takes one other one to know two, see? Now, let me ask it the other way, so for Deb's, teaching, would you, would, do you see that in Deb?
Not really.
Okay. That could be, but, but that's the first time we've had one that might not be, we don't know, so, pretty interesting.
I think that that is maybe, it could've been a calling that I just refused to listen to, honestly.
I could totally see you being a teacher, but I, I don't know you well enough to...
It's not that I never, you get, she definitely nurtured, nurtured, you know, she definitely, like... I mean, I didn't, that didn't even ring true, but I...
But she, but, but as, like, with, the thing that I see is with scripture and stuff, you're very, like, the way you address that, and how you understand it, and how you try to, you project it, like, I could totally see that in you.
She has a good, good perspective.
Yes.
Sometimes it's a totally different thought.
It's just interesting, I'm just saying, like, don't throw it away, but also just bear in mind, you know. Sam?
Uh, mercy, faith, and administration.
Administration, good card, so, yeah.
What do you think of that, Sam?
Uh, I don't know. I, I don't agree.
You got nothing?
I know Sam, he usually, I think he goes there, play right out, I mean, Sam's always a very compassionate kid, with mercy, his heart goes out to other people.
It sure does, definitely.
I can see the faith there too, so, I would say...
Administration is, I don't know, organized, or you are, you are pretty, you are very...
We have to be.
No, I think, but, so there you go, look.
Can I, can I ask, kind of, where you rate him in service? Can I ask him?
You can ask him.
Twenty-eight.
Cause you're...
That's pretty high.
You definitely are that.
Bill?
I was serving, teaching, food.
Yeah, serving number one for you? Yeah. Anybody surprised by that?
No.
No. Okay, there you go. Uh, Jesus?
Uh, faith, giving, and pastor, I guess, shepherd.
Yeah, faith, that, just a little, I know you have faith, that makes sense, that's the top one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see that totally. Now, I can't speak to the other ones yet, but soon enough. Soon enough, on Sundays, I see you, on Sunday mornings, so... Soon enough, on Sundays, I see you on Sunday mornings, so.
Me?
Yeah.
Two of them were the same, faith and giving, and the third one was pastor shepherd.
Anybody?
Some dead on.
Those are dead on, aren't they?
Where was your teaching at?
Yeah, your, yeah, teaching, most of it closed, huh?
Uh, it was twenty-seven.
That's pretty high.
It's up there. I would, shepherding is, those are elder, all of these, just saying.
Elder, I'm the elder.
Yeah, but that's, What about you, Judy?
Um, let's see, my highest one was a third of five, and that's the highest you can get, and it was in discernment.
Very good.
And seriously, that is, I'm good at, I seriously, I don't know, I can see people, I don't know. And I'm telling you, in the days of the Antichrist, I always say, boy, we better pray for discernment if we're here.
Oh, absolutely.
If we're here, because He is, He's false, and He will trick you.
I think that's one of the questions.
We pray for discernment, and it's so, it didn't surprise me, but it did in a sense. And then the other two were faith. Because when all those fail, I just, I have faith that everything's gonna turn out okay.
So let's, let's, let's think about this for a second. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven people in the room. We, I asked for the top three, that's thirty-three, and there's only one that's in question. It's pretty accurate, huh?
Yeah, I would say so.
Do you have one in question as well?
No, there's twelve though, what was yours?
I did all of them, like, all four or five of them, I did. Would, would you like, which one do you want, which version do you want? This one?
Yeah.
This one was, and I forgot it, but it was leadership, wisdom, discernment, faith. I had five or six that were in that.
Oh, boy.
That were in the layer.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Oh, administration, was it leadership administration? There's administration, this one's administration for both, I think, isn't it? No, it was leadership, administration were the top two. And then discernment, faith, and this one, which I don't want to talk about, and then this one.
Which one do you want to talk about?
None, none of them.
Somebody tell me, which one was we got want to talk about?
Anyway, but shepherding as a, like, mentorship thing, yes.
Yeah.
This, this part, no.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
If I could, apostleship, exactly what would that be?
So that's like a,
Missionary. Like a missionary, that's what that would be?
That's a, that's a different, that's a verbal call almost, kind of like,
Okay, a verbal call to be a missionary.
Yes, very much. And then you're being spoken to, and then, which is why I didn't want to go, like, so we know, we don't have to worry about all the other ones. We're just worried about our own, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine.
Okay, no, I was just curious about that one.
That one was a weird, that one was a, everybody probably, I would expect to be low on that one.
Yeah, no, that's,
Because that's a whole different, so you're talking in tongues.
No, no, because I, I was just curious to look at, when I was looking at, I mean, looking at the numbers, like, my evangelism was high, but apostleship was low.
Speaking in tongues.
So I was trying to figure out what apostleship was.
I think, yeah, I'm pretty sure speaking in tongues goes in with that, and there's some other stuff.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out exactly what that was.
I honestly didn't want to spend any time on anything that wasn't harsh. Like, I wanted to have our list, so we have, we have our list, and then, faith and action items coming up. But, before we do that, oh man, all right, real quick, on this, other handout here. There's the first page, it says, purpose page. And then there's a
You've got it.
Abilities page, and then there's the affirmation page. And there's the summary of all of it. What do you mean, you've got to be kidding me? So the purpose page is simple, we can do it right now, but I don't want it, the library's already yelling me a couple of tenses. So, the faith and action items this week are a little bit tweaked, because we didn't get through, which is fine. Number one, yes. Number two, yes, you don't have to flip it over, because you're gonna do it for the first time. So make sure you do your purpose page, and if you read at the top, it tells you what to do. But you're basically going to, in three minutes, write down whatever comes to mind when you think of your purpose, write it down. And this is why it was important to help us, to help us define what purpose was. Got it? Whatever comes to mind first, you go, okay, purpose, and go, yep.
Something with that question mark?
There could be a big bad question mark, but I think when you, there's, okay. And then, the abilities page, it says review, just list your abilities, right, going into next week. And then, the affirmation, this is talk to other people, we're gonna do that this week, we did that already. So you are, we already gave you a jumpstart on your affirmation page, because you can list everybody in this room, you don't have to. But you can say the group affirmed the spiritual gifts that you had, right? That's what we're talking about, and talk to other people about your abilities, and maybe somebody else gives you an idea of purpose as well. So you can consult with that stuff, but, the concept with the purpose page is just go, right? And then keep going, keep writing stuff down that comes to mind, in your three minutes or whatever. And then you're gonna do it again.
Again?
Yep, you just do it. Listen, it, it's gonna, it's gonna basically forces you to refine it, it's, it's a trial. But that's what I want you to do going into next week, so make sure this is all about coming into next week. Next week, we're gonna talk about how we apply those things that we've learned. And then how do we stay the course? Those discussions, which if you think about it, that was the initial topic for tonight. Was how do we stay the course when there are obstacles in the way? But it's taken the third time talking about this to be able to even be at that point. Okay, now how do you, what, what do you, and there'll be slides and stuff, we'll do the same thing next week, much less. But as far as, how do we start putting these into action? That's what we're gonna talk about next week, I mean, the spiritual gifts and all that stuff. Because then, now that you understand it, or you have a better understanding of your gifts, it's not gonna be perfect, you have to start putting, you have to start doing some things, and then it'll line it up better for you. There's, like, like I said last week, there's kind of a formula, and then also maybe not a formula, but there's a way to get to it. If there wasn't, wouldn't have scripture pointed us in those directions. So,